Hello, 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 welcome on this Sunday morning to Lotus World, your channel. Today we have Gary Verma to talk with us and what he is, what his thoughts are. So over to you Gary, introduce yourself to our viewers and welcome on show, sorry for that, yeah.
Thank you very much, thanks Vipul to you and a big thank you to Lotus World as well, which is helping the community to take our voice to the bigger audience, you know, specifically in this world where, you know, pandemic is going on and people are mentally stressed as well. So I think you guys doing great job Lotus World where we can take our voice to the public. Yeah, as you said myself, I'm Gary Verma. I work in a IT company as a profession. I came to Australia in ninety-six as a student, you know, as a student doing studies in IT. And since then, you know, I've done my double masters and I have worked for many IT companies. And during my journey, I have learned a lot as well, you know, to do a social service as well. So as I said, by profession in IT, I'm married happily married with the two beautiful young daughters. Happily married and that's a big motivation for me. And socially I'm very, very active, helping many, many not-for-profit organizations to do their charity work and social work.
Right. What brought you to Australia?
Yeah, as I think everyone else, to be true, I did my bachelor's in India, Bachelor of Science. Then I was pursuing my law degree in India. I completed the first year of my law degree when, you know, I thought, you know, I want to do something else in life. And so then I thought I will do master's degree. And that time I think Australia was not even very well known in our circus back in India. Everybody was trying to go to US. So I thought Australia is beautiful because I used to love cricket, you know, first of all. And I've seen, you know, early morning I used to wake up and India used to come to Australia. And I've seen Australia is a beautiful city, beautiful people, very friendly people, very welcoming people. And then I thought, okay, that's one aspect, I love cricket, so I can go there. And then second thought in my mind was I want to also do something in my life, you know, become an entrepreneur or get a good job in IT with my higher education. So I got admission in a university in Brisbane in ninety-six basically, and doing my masters in information systems. So that was the main reason I arrived in Australia to buy a masters and higher education.
Right. Tell us a little about your starting life or starting journey or the start of the journey here in Australia. How was it and what was the learning and what message would be to people out there who come? And how their initial stage or initial journey should be managed?
Absolutely, absolutely, I think you have a very, very good question Vipul. As I said, as anybody else, you know, their dreams as well, I was good in study that time. I could study now as well, but maybe a bit of, you know, age factor now, I can still do degrees. So as everybody else, their dream, people, you know, when people come here, they come here, they're thinking they will get settled straight away, they'll make money. But I think at that time my aim was to do study and most likely go back to India as well. If I got a decent job back in India during those days. So when I arrived in Australia, you know, whatever dreams people told us back in India, I think that wasn't the case. Which means you can't simply go and get a job straight away. So as any international student, there were struggles. In the beginning, we were working hard to get a part-time job as well. We were struggling to be true, to pay the bills, pay the rent and living cost. And specifically to put food on the table, you know. And I wasn't good at cooking as well, so there was second struggle, you know. And very hard way I learned how to cook during my university days. And struggle was, you know, study every morning, go to university, come home, look for a job and then again, you know, cook food. Not many friends were there that time as well. And, you know, to adopt to a new country and a new culture was a big task as well. With God's grace, you know, with positive attitude, we have learned a lot and we made a lot of good friends as well. And my, you know, feedback to or my request to community, who is coming here now and anyone who wants to come here is, if somebody is showing you guinea pastures without any hard work, that's not the case, I will say, you know, don't fall for that. If you intentionally is genuinely want to study or want to do a business here or want to do anything, which is, you know, what in your passion, then definitely this is the country to come and build your dreams.
Yes, yes. From your answer, few takeaways, quickly, positive attitude, learning, hunger for learning, checking the reality before making a move and keeping a positive mindset and building a little bit of network of like-minded people.
Absolutely Vipul, you are spot on. I think my attitude is half glass full, remember? This is a very, you know, tough situation as we all know, this coronavirus pandemic goes going on. So, you know, it's up to you, you want to take it in a negative way, you want to take it in a positive way. If you have a positive attitude in life, if you see the glass always half-full or maybe, you know, see how you want to make it full further as well, you know, then you go a long way. All your mental stress and your toughness will go away. You will be happy as you survive and you will also able to help others as well, even your positive attitude.
Yep. When you landed and in that initial journey, I'm pretty sure you would have made a few friends. Out of those friends, there might be few of them who are still very good friends with you, is that the case?
Absolutely, absolutely, Vipul, I think very, very good point. I think I was very young that time, you know, when I arrived here, just finished my bachelor's in India and I came here for masters. So very young, so I didn't make a lot of friends in university. All those friends have gone somewhere in their career, in different countries, some are in this country, I'm in touch with a few. But there are few people who are not there with me in my university or with my, you know, class. But I met them during my social interaction, like Indian, my Indian people or like-minded people, who helped me a lot as well in my journey to settle down in Brisbane. So there are four or five family friends who are, you know, my brother's elder brother, like ten years elder to me. And they're still in touch with me and then whenever they go to India, they go to my parents and when I go to India, I go to their parents, I look after each other. And they live in Brisbane, are living in Melbourne, I moved to Melbourne in ninety-eight. So we still had that loving relationship where we talked to each other regularly and still support each other as and when the session arises. So that love bonding is still there, I can never forget that, you know, they helped me in my tough time.
Yeah, 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 again, again, a message, build relationship, maintain it, help as much as you can, two-way bridge. That's, that's the way to move forward and live as a cohesive, integrated community.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and in say, after studies in your career path, how was the journey or how was the journey so far?
Yeah, once I finished my master's degree in the University of Brisbane, luckily with God's grace, I got a break and said I work for a company, you know, big IT company, German company, who specializes in ERP software and enterprise resource planning. So I got a break that time to do a job and I moved to Melbourne with that job. And I worked in a very big company called IBM that time. So I worked for IBM for a couple of years and I worked for a company called Deloitte and were consulting. And then I worked for Indian company called Satim Computers, which now is called Tech Mahindra. After Tech Mahindra, I joined SAP as well SAP Australia, as I'm now working in SAP. So journey was pretty good, to be true. And I got a decent job, which can put food on the table. And I'm always thankful to God and I'm always thankful to my family and friends who supported me. And as long as you are healthy, you got a job and that job is so flexible, which enables you to do more for the community. And which enables you to do, help others, you know. That work-life balance is very key, so I'm very honoured to be working in a company which encourages social question and corporate social responsibilities as well.
Amazing, amazing. Now, studies are done, your career path has been decent with a flow. I'm pretty sure during all this journey, you would have contributed or given or done beyond your boundary, like, like the giving, literally giving back, a little, little to people near and dear or known, unknown. Like somebody helped you, you would have also helped. Did the journey start right since inception or in between towards some sort of social work?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I think very, very good question Vipul. And as I said, you know, during my student life, most people, you know, from our, you know, migrant background, they do face difficulties if you're not very, very well-versed with the local rules and if you're not very well-off, professional point of view as well. So yes, I did have a struggle in my student life. And there are few friends who went beyond and helped me, which put your tears in my eyes as well during that time. An unknown person, there was a classic example where, you know, I landed in Brisbane. And one week gone and I wanted to go to a religious place, you know, to pay my offerings. Somebody gave address and that road, you know, please go and there's a religious place there. So I thought, okay, fair enough, I'll go there. And I went there and I got the bus and I had no clue the road is like sixty meters long. And yeah, so we thought the streets are normally in a few hundred meters, but I wasn't aware. So I called a religious place and saying I'm an international student and I want to come and pray my offerings and I want to meet people as well. So such a good Samaritan, you know, the people who, the person who picked up the phone is saying, where are you? I said, look, I'm standing here next to this petrol station. And the gentleman told me, please stay there, I'll come and pick you up, you know. So gentleman drove from a religious place and he drove almost six kilometers just to pick me up and take me to the God's place, you know, the religious place there. And that was wonderful gesture and I can't forget that. And after prayer was over, after we had our bhandaara and langer, and that gentleman dropped me to my home as well and gave me his number, good bit, if you need anything in future, just call me. So that, you know, gesture is still there in my heart, that triggered me, okay, if somebody can help me when I'm in need, why can't I do it, you know? So once I got a job, I moved to Melbourne, I also started, you know, playing my part to give back to society a little bit. At that time I was living in CBD, so I thought I was starting helping international students, I faced difficulties. And during that time, if anyone gives me a referencing, please go to Gary. And if you want temporary accommodation for a week or two week, I used to have a two-bedroom flat at that time and I was even alone, single that time. So I used to give my accommodation room for one week, two weeks, free of cost during that time, just to help somebody settle down, you know, in their life. Sometime, you know, if one week of stay with politeness and guidance, okay, you can do this, you can do this. You go there for university, you go there for your job, you go there for your bus pass, you go there for your, you know, certificate. It helps enormous to be true, anybody who arriving from overseas on the day one.
I think that would lay a good foundation in their starting point of journey in this country and can be a good memory and cherish it first. The way you have that experience of somebody drove six kilometers, picked you up and dropped, that will always be in your mind and it will give you a positive thought always to kind of help people and do the same to newcomers, great. Other than your family, like family would or will or is normally the source of inspiration for all of us, outside the family, who is your source of inspiration?
Yeah, as I said, you know, you already said already, family is your biggest source of inspiration, you know. My family is, my parents are definitely, and I have seen my parents, you know, struggle to send me here as well. And then my dad told me one thing, make sure you are successful and don't do anything wrong, always the better law. So that thought, that one line always stayed in my mind whenever I, you know, used to sad, used to be sad in my student life or even now as well. And that triggered me, okay, I need to do something in life, I need to study hard, I need to become something alive. So that was a big source of inspiration, yeah, as always. And apart from that, you know, always the love and support of your family, from your friends also, you know, it goes a long way because it inspires you to do something new in life as well. And the classic example, you know, I heard one more inspiration story in recent days, which gives you going as well to do more for, for community, is there was a girl in India, back in India, I think, and she was going in a train. And somebody, you know, tried to molest her in the train and then what she did, she jumped out of the train, yeah. And to escape the culprits, she, the train, two trains going on, then she cut her legs, you know. And then, and then somebody took her to hospital and then, you know, and legs were gone and then, you know, somebody took her to hospital and then asked her, what do you want to do in life? That time she decided I wanted to climb Mount Everest and that lady did climb Mount Everest and won named person. But, you know, there's also inspiration story as well, it's all in your mind, you know, it doesn't matter what you do. If you have positive attitude in life, you only want, no matter what, is the thought of doing something good, thought of something doing positive, is always, it doesn't matter you do it or not, but I think then somebody told, okay, you have already thought about this thing, climbing Mount Everest, you already want, you already climbed, she did climb.
She, she is a motivational speaker, she inspires people these days.
Absolutely, absolutely, no, you know, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. Now coming to like, so, so far I have understood from our conversation that it's, you strongly believe and actively believe in terms of kind of give and take and giving is a little more from the take. So let's take that journey now, conversational journey towards that. Give few kind of examples of your giving back to the society or community where maybe close by where you live or a little far off maybe. Give couple of classic examples.
Yeah, absolutely, I think that's a good point as well. As I said, you know, I started helping society or friends and families, you know, back in my student life as well. Or first time I got a job, I thought that small, small steps I can help. And those small, small steps gone bigger and bigger, when I start participating more and more with social agencies and also not many organizations. So currently, you know, I played a huge part, I'm an executive committee member for one of the biggest religious places in Australia. And there I have enabled community to celebrate most of our community festival along with the volunteers, along with the committee members. So we are helping others to come forward and celebrate their culture and festivals. And I'm also advisor as of now for Victorian multicultural commissions, regional advisory committee as well, where we do raise community issues, any, you know, racism, any prejudice happening. So we have raised those issues with VMC, so that they can form policies to help migrant communities as well and have a society which is more inclusive and more cohesive as well. And in addition to that, I'm also an advisory committee member for Melton City Council's intercultural advisory committee as well, formerly known as CORDAC. Where again, within the Melton City Council, I represent the voice of our migrant community or Indian community as well and make sure we are looked after and if anybody having an issue, I do reach with the relevant authorities in that meeting as advisor and also formulate policies which, which helps us. And again, I'm doing one more role as well, I'm president of, currently I'm president of Melton Interface Network, which combines thirty-four different religions together, three, four different communities together in the, in the, well, it said, Melton City Council, which means, you know, we are Hindus, Sikhs, Baha'is, Christians, Christians from different, different backgrounds, you know, we are Muslim. You could be anybody, have your own faith. So we're trying to respect each other, we're trying to bring awareness about each other's faith as well. And we arrange a lot of tours of religious places where all the group together goes, different people of different faiths and understand each other's religion so that they know misgivings and they can respect more and more and have a social society which is, you know, inclusive and no hatred. So that's going on, that effort is still going on together. And during that, two different, different organizations, we have helped people who are homeless. We have helped people who are victims of family violence. And we have also helped people who are, you know, vulnerable in society, giving them groceries, giving them food, arranging even the community dinners through Melton Interface Network and along with Melton City Council, we have arranged four or five community dinners in the council hall, which was well received and up to one fifty to twenty people attended. And food was kindly treated by a she dug a temple in Rockbank. And when I went to the event first time, Vipul, I saw a lot of people from, you know, not just only migrant background, a lot of people from local, you know, Anglo background, three-age people. And when they saw the full meal, three course meal, they were crying and I, they were crying, I was also crying as well. Sometime we take things for granted, you know, we thought then we got meals, everybody else has a meal. But you would be, you know, amazed to see, you'd be surprised to see, there are still many families who struggle to put food on table. So when they were enjoying food, I was digitally so happy and I was crying with tears, happiness tears. At least through our organization, we are able to help few families, you know, and then, and the bond is still there with those families. When I, when I meet them some functions, they still feel very unhappy and then I wanted to more and more entering that line as well to help people, you know, where possible.
I'm pretty sure you, the place where you're living or the suburb or the council where you're living, you've been living for a little longer time so as to understand the suburb or the place or the council, you know, a little more deeper. So what are, what are the current challenges that the suburb or the council is facing or the ward is facing, which has not been attended or looked after or resolved for a while? What are those, like, you can say two or three or four challenges?
Yeah, now, it's a very good, overall, I thank Melton City Council and all the city councillors and officers who are working to for betterment of our society. But having said that, you know, not everybody is perfect, there's still there are some gaps.
Yes.
So, yeah, and as you know, Melton City Council is one of the fastest growing council in Australia or Victoria or Australia as well, along with Windham. So it's very, very fast growing. When you grow faster, especially growing faster because the migrant communities are moving in as well, a lot of families are making this at their home. So that brings, you know, you need to have order box thinking, you need to have infrastructure, which we sometimes we like. And sometime you need to take a step back of the growth. If you keep doing growth, I'll enter the growth, you will see, we've become like some foreign countries where the buildings are there but nobody lives there, yeah. So my funda is, my aim is, my policy is to work with council to have a sustainable growth. You do grow, fair enough, but if you grow and make houses, you know, schools are there, if you know kindergarten there, if there's no footpath, you know, roads, you know, bus stop, how are you going to survive? So that's one of the aspects is definitely grow, but grow with, with required infrastructure as well, with the required services as well, so that we can service, you know, enough people to go to schools, enough kids to go to parks, we should have enough, you know, hospitals as well. We don't want to burden on the existing infrastructure where even everybody else will struggle as well. And a classic example is, you know, when I go to station, like I moved to this locality in two thousand and three, yeah. And two thousand and three, I moved from, I was living in Brisbane, sorry, earlier, then Melbourne City, then two thousand and eight built the house and moved here. At that time, you go to your station for, go to CBD for work, no traffic, you go to car park, even nine o'clock, ten o'clock, car park is available, you know, empty. Now, if you go at seven AM, the car park capacity had doubled, mind you, car park capacity has doubled. Government has put in double capacity already, council and government, but still, you go seven o'clock, car park is gone. So what do you do? And then, then we don't have enough transport, local buses as well, and the frequency is like very, very much forty-five minutes, one hour, which doesn't fit with the timetable for your work or school as well, so children are struggling. So the transportation is also one issue. Another thing is, I'm not sure why northwest councils have a highest rate. If you look at southeast, their rate, council rates are much lower than ours. Because we calculate based on house value, house value goes up, yield goes up. So I want to bring, I want to advocate for issue which is to review the how we calculate our rates as well, so that we stop this unfair increases as well. And now during COVID, the council has put a stop, okay, this year they have frozen the rates, but I want to advocate strongly, not so one year, we should stop freeze or rate increase basically for next two to three years, so that we can enable local businesses and local families to come out of this financial crisis, which is enabled by COVID, so that more and more help can be given as well. And one more issue I want to highlight is, Vipul, what you just gave to my heart is, is the safety and security of our residents as well. Last time when I stood for election as well, I raised the issue with government and council both advocate strongly. I know this is a state government issue, but we have to advocate it from council first. So advocacy is to have a twenty-four by seven police station at Carolyn Springs. I know a lot of people will debate saying the sources are occupied here and there, but I think for safety, there's no harm. We don't have a nearby, a station which is twenty percent, we have to go to Sunshine on Melton. And mind you, this is the fastest growing community, population growing very, very fast, so we should go for help, we should go for safety. And more, and more patrols as well, you know, to make sure people are safe, people are, you know, the crime wave is not there. Earlier, if you remember, two, three years back, there was a lot of, you know, crime happening and people were feeling very, very unsafe. And I heard from local residents and also media outlets as well, many residents moved out of this area to go to southeast because they feeling unsafe that time. And I hope that it is not the case anymore. And I still want to advocate strongly for a twenty-four seven police station at Carolyn Spring as well more police patrol so that our locality is feeling safe as well. And also, one issue point could be adding more security CCTV cameras as well, which council can monitor as we have recording, if any, any crime does happen in streets, so we know, we can go back and check the recording as well. So there's a few, few of the issues, I got many issues, I can keep going on. Maybe we can continue and discuss maybe next time as well, I have got a full agenda of issues. But these are the main issues, I want to ensure, you know, people are taken care. And one thing definitely I want to say is, being a migrant community, I also want inclusiveness as well, where migrants are given the equal share in decision-making process and, and we do get required help to celebrate our functions and festivals. And enough programs should be there to help migrant communities, especially our seniors, when they come here, they have nothing else to do. They, they get bored at home and it gives mental stress as well. So I will advocate strongly with council, if elected, is to have some programs for seniors as well, where they occupied and they contribute constructively to society.
So, three, I think I could gather, one is balancing between the growth and the gap of infrastructure. Second, evening out the rates with a proper basis of a calculation so that it's fair. Third, safety for the local residents. And safety by means of having a police station, patrolling, cameras, vigilance amongst the residents as well with the support of this infrastructure.
Absolutely.
Now, yes, you are right, Melton and that part of geography is growing at a little faster rate. And I think it's been growing since last five, six years at a very faster rate. People would have voiced their concerns, you've part of the council, there are other people, other teammates like you who are working hard to, you know, make the things better. Is there, is there a difference of opinion amongst the team members?
Yeah.
Might be a stupid question, but what I'm asking is, yes, there, there will be differences. But how do you resolve to move forward? Because that is going to be the case today, tomorrow and day after as well.
Absolutely, I think, as you know, I mentioned earlier as well, when I mentioned both the police patrols and twenty-four seven police station as well, there will be arguments in our committee leaders or other people as well, who's thinking, you know, maybe other way around. Maybe seeing as, or no, maybe it's not a requirement, but again, you need to constructively argument with your pros and cons. So I got a lot of pros than cons, so again, you need to bring them along because it's journey together. It's not just my journey or one person's journey or second person's journey, it's a journey of the community. All those issues are relevant to the community. So what I will do in that session is I will do my study and I will work with them to alleviate their concerns or alleviate their, because why they are saying this should not be done or should be done in a different way. I'm more than happy to uh take a suggestion for them. Do they have any other option B, option C? Uh as long as, as the end goal of safety and security is met, I'm okay. Uh that could be more police patrols, that could be something else. So again, uh I always take people along, uh take their views, take the suggestions and then, then take them along. And then make a constructive policy to advocate strongly. So maybe not one, always one option doesn't work. There could be multiple options and we can combine those options uh to make it happen.
Yeah. So you, you are advocating uh uh constructive complement. Or constructive compete or constructive teamwork so as to move forward together. Though there might be differences in thoughts or the, the strategies or the way of doing things or uh. Altogether a disagreement, but still work together.
Absolutely, absolutely, Vipul. Yeah, absolutely. I, I, I read this and Vipul, uh we could have a different thinking of doing things. But end of the day, the end goal is still the same. So as long as your end goal is the same. Betterment for the community, growth for the community and help for the community, we can bring along all the people's thoughts and then have a constructive, you know, decision-making process.
Right. Um. If from this conversation or even when you are uh uh. Talking to people through digital media or maybe in person. Uh where and how can people reach you to share their voice or share their suggestions or share their concerns? Or give some ideas to you as well, where and how can they reach you?
Absolutely, very, very good point, Vipul. And again, I'm, uh once again, I'm thankful to Lotus, you know, uh world as well, uh for giving me this opportunity. Uh as I said, you know, I got a Facebook page, um Gary Verma for Cambridge Ward. So that's my Facebook page. Uh so any issues, concerns they want me to address, they can send me a, a message there. They can leave their comment there, they can, if something is, is very personal, they want to share and discuss. Uh I'm more than happy to take, you know, a personal message as well um, um on the page. And also I give my email as well, garyverma7@gmail dot com. I will repeat again, garyverma7@gmail dot com. They can send me email as well. And I will assure full confidentiality, uh as I, I do always when I deal with the community issues in past uh seventy, eighty years. And I will work my best to address their concern if it's within uh the council area, I will definitely raise with the council authorities. If it's, I have to advocate strongly with the uh other department of state government or federal government, I'm more than happy to reach out to them as well. And what I want to have, to help community, be it within council, be it uh at other level as well.
Right. Um. Towards a conclusion uh of this episode now. Uh speak out your heart to your world. What would you want to say? It can be brief, it can be a little long, doesn't matter. Just speak out your heart to your world.
Yeah, we're basically, what, what I'm saying is to all the listeners, uh Flotus World and also people who will be, you know, looking at this. Is no matter who wins or who loses, always keep doing your best for the community, always help everyone. And if you want to criticize, I can see, because many candidates have put their hand up uh in local office, which is a great step as well. Uh and today, uh if you want to do criticize a policy, I think do a constructive criticism for candidates, you know? And give them feedback so they can improve and they can have policies, judge them on their policies, judge them on their past community work, you know? And vote for the person who you think has done something for the community in the past, I will track record. Not just someone who just never to be seen before. And when the construction come, you know, you see the new name. It's coming popping up for the community. It's your call. At the end of the day, it's democracy. We are welcoming everyone to be part of this voice. But I think voters are the, are the decision makers. So I would say, uh your vote is your voice, use it wisely. And be constructive, be, uh you know, give ideas and, and they encourage social creation. And we're the same, we're same people, we don't help each other. So as long as we have social harmony, as we have a quickness and we give constructive feedback. That will definitely help um shape up our society much, much better going forward.
So it, it, again, I, I read or I'm adding a little bit of my words as well maybe here. That you are a resource that people, the community should properly. Communicate, proper, properly utilize for their own betterment. So they also should have a clarity as to what they want, not only in the immediate future. But long term also. So they should think, they should have clarity, they should plan and they should come to you and discuss. And make use of your presence in the world for their benefit. Does it make sense?
Absolutely, absolutely. I said, I'm, I'm one of them. Um I'm part of community and I'm one of them. So. And I know being a family person, I know being, working in, in a, an I T company, who, what, how to save a job, how to have a local business. So I've seen those faces, uh I'm one of them. So I can definitely, uh you know, can help. Uh so as you already said, you know, being part of the community is always better than being outside.
Yeah. Okay, um so we, with these words, we are towards conclusion. Thank you, Gary, for your time on this Sunday morning. Much appreciate um the, the communication and the insight that you have given. The person who you are have been ki- kind of conveyed. And uh people who will see this definitely will get a little closer to you, to the, better know you. And maybe they come forward to you and ask for the help or give suggestions. Uh viewers, what we will do is we'll put the little bit of details into the description, uh like what Gary has said, his page, his email I D. So that you can reach to him and take your thoughts to him and make the community and the world. A, a better place to live for long, right? So thank you, Gary, once again for your time and we'll catch up with you soon. Uh uh till then, you take care of yourself and keep working hard. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Vipul. And thank you once again to, to you and, and Lotus World. And only last message to community is, you know, I am, this is a tough time of COVID, stay positive and be safe. Stay at home and obey the local government guidelines, um because they are working for our safety and keep well, stay safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye bye.